Okay, we have a forum. We, the Planning and Zoning Commission, call this meeting to order at 6:06 PM on February 1st, 2022. Wow, it's already February. I believe that. Dave, are there any citizens? Obviously, I guess there's no citizens here with business not on the agenda that would like to speak at this time?
Not a doctor, for me, one in advance of meeting.
Okay, thank you. Under consideration and possible action, item number one, consideration and possible action on January 4th, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Hi, Cap.
I consider it the best. There's no one you feel.
That'd be great. Sure. You want to keep everybody comfortable. Especially for you, it's good.
Sorry to wait, guys.
No problem. Thank you for calling. We knew you were on the item coming up, so we didn't want to start too early. We're good timing, we're fine.
Okay.
How are you feeling? Good? Good? All right. So, consideration and possible action on the January 4th, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 4th regular meeting minutes.
All those in...
Second.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, I'm sorry. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The majority is past the minutes, I'm sorry. The motion passes. Item number two, consideration and possible action on the preliminary plat for Hills of Town Creek, Section 5.
If you have our engineers with us this evening and have received your memo, we'll have an interview that will discuss if you have any thoughts or questions for having myself or Cap, we can have an answer.
Just give me a moment here.
We were presented with this a couple of meetings back, correct?
Correct.
So, what you saw a couple of meetings back were the variance requests?
Okay.
For lot width and lot depth in an area, and those are reflected in the plat?
And what, at that time, it was still toss-up whether there's going to be one access point or two, is that right?
I believe it was, we discussed it, but they're sticking with the one that we thought about.
One, okay.
It's less of a concern because they're also extending Emma's Way to Lone Star Parkway. So, it gives the folks that do live in Section 5 a way to easily get to Lone Star Parkway and not necessarily have to take Emma's Way back down to 105.
When is that proposed timeline?
It'll be constructed with Section 5.
So, when Section 5 is done and people start buying and moving in, they have access to Emma's Way to Lone Star Parkway?
Exactly. It'll be poured when the roads for the neighborhood are poured.
And so, and did they tell us the width of the road of the entry? Because I know when you go down Emma's Way and you turn into that one subdivision, in my opinion, those streets are kind of narrow. Are they a little bit wider in this new section?
No.
When you go in there?
Not to my understanding, they're going to be the same width as what's already existing, and then Emma's Way will continue at the same width that it is today.
That's tight, tight, tight.
Now, it was mentioned about the redlining, and I'm looking, I'm not sure if it's the same page number, but on page eight, so the only redlining that we're seeing is for add the lot width, add the lot size variances in the side yard setbacks, right?
Right, so we just like to see those noted on the preliminary plat, and we did receive the revised plat either Friday or yesterday, and so all the comments have been addressed that we had noted on here.
Okay, so as far as all the plats, the only redlining, those are the only redlines?
That's right, so the way our memo was worded is that we recommended approval subject to them addressing all of the comments, and after the packets were put together, we got the revised plat that had all the comments addressed.
Okay, great. And as was mentioned, this is the second time we're looking at it. What might help all of us as we move forward for future development, too, is, I just had two, just questions you can help us with. Engineers reviewed based on City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 78, Section 60. One thing that's come up over time is, you know, here, we're, we kind of look at things objectively, trying to understand that we rely on you all as professionals. We've had a few where we did have one way in, one way out, and it was turned down, it was too many. This one, I know we kind of wondered about that a little bit. I understand what you're saying about Emma's Way, but we still have, compared to the first four phases, which I believe all had two ways in, two ways out, this still only has one way in, one way out. And my gut feeling is we're probably getting kind of near the limit on that. But my question is, how do I say this? Do you all have a, basically, a guide or a formula or an equation that says, if I've got 82 homes, you know, then what's the breaking point where you've got to start having another way out? Because the concern here is, just at that front, that bottleneck at the front, you've got everybody coming in, coming out, that one, you know, coming onto Emma's Way. And my original question was about it, was, you know, when you've got kids in the streets and things, you're kind of concerned about how much volume of traffic. I do appreciate that, I know, I think it was Jonathan got back to us the next time, it's, you know, they took a good look at those, what I would call cul-de-sacs, they're a little different than what's in the other ones, they're not really dead end, it's just kind of one big loop. So, I guess, again, do you, is there some kind of a guide that you use that says, what, you know, or maybe the architect's using, how do we know when it's time to go to one more, because that would, to one more entry or exit? Because that would help us in the future, too, when we're looking at something.
Right, so as far as where we're doing the plat, that's not something that we, it's not a calculation that we run, that's more on the design side.
Yeah.
Since that's not something that's in one of your ordinances, it more comes down to, and I know in the past, when somebody has presented a preliminary plat to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's been, you know, I more abey and foresee issues, it would be great if you had a second entrance, since it's not technically part of your ordinance. From the design standpoint, what we can do, or what can be done, is you can do a traffic, oh, just a quick traffic study, not even a full study, more just kind of like a car count, if you will, a trip count. If you have this many homes during peak morning and peak afternoon, this is approximately how many people would be going in and out at that time. What that looks at is essentially traffic flow at the intersection, you know, how many, how many people are going to be waiting? And then it also takes into account, you know, regular traffic on Emma's Way. In this scenario, I foresee a lot of people going down to the light, and so for the folks in Section 5, if they wanted to take a right and then hit Lone Star Parkway, that might be a, there would potentially be a lower traffic option, because there won't be a light at Lone Star Parkway, so people would prioritize going to the light. But when it comes to design, you're laying out a section, you can do a trip generator count to see how many you'd be looking at. Ultimately, as far as a breaking point, there's, to my knowledge, there's not kind of a standard that I'm aware of, of you need this many, and now you need to add a second entrance, unless the regulatory entities, city, tax, county, whoever, were to require it.
And we all just can kind of compare it to the real, what we've seen in the real world, and I, for instance, Buffalo Springs, we've got about 89 houses, or whatever it is, well, 90 lots, maybe 80 something houses, and we, there's two ways in, two ways out, and other ones we've seen around the area. And I think the first four phases had that in this, but then again, it's just, they did a little different variation on how to loop it around.
That was one of my concerns, too, is now that there's one entrance, and the road width is not any difference, you're going to have parking on the street, kids in the street, I understand there are the little cul-de-sacs, half cul-de-sacs, I guess, but that was my, my...
Several of us raised that concern.
Concern over that, yeah.
Was the, were the engineers involved in, if a fire truck could get in there and drive down the street safely, if there was cars parked outside of their driveway on the side of the street? Was that part of anything that was investigated?
There is a fire, a fire marshal has to approve the plat.
So, part of that is considered in the city's regular minimum width standards?
Okay.
Is can a fire truck fit? And that also goes to the county's minimum street width, as well as all considering fire truck accessibility?
Okay. And it accounts for people parked on the side of the road?
Yeah, so they could drive between two cars if they were parked right across the street from each other? That's my concern, is it's going to be small.
It is, it is, and, I mean, I can't say for sure, but I do know that typically the fire marshal has an opportunity to take a look at these as well.
When does the fire marshal look at them?
If you have a lot assigned and recorded with the county.
So, after the design is all done and everything's, that's one of the last steps?
They, so they do get a chance to look at it before it's signed, but, I mean, during, during design, even in construction, if slight adjustments need to be made, they can be, things aren't set in stone until the plat, and even then, a plat can be amended if need be.
But typically, you design streets and roads within legality.
Right.
Okay.
And they do not request a minimum road width variance. So, this is in line with...
There's no variances on any of the roads in here?
Not on road width.
Okay, thank you.
So, all in all, everything is done as per the previous plats and the previous, okay?
Correct. In the same style as the previous sections, the variances that you approved were the same, nothing additional.
Everything else, okay.
Yeah, and you understand, the other reason we raised that question is just it's a little different than some of the other sections, and it's probably getting close to that limit, but I'm sure that the actual drafts people do have some guidance on that, since it's not in our ordinance really specifically about a number. But it's just something in the future, if you could, see if you can give us a little feedback on that as we go.
Yeah.
Because it'll come up again.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I guess one point that I'll ask Cap and clarify is that the design guidelines mirror the county's guidelines.
That's correct.
Okay. Oh, and we always like to talk about green spaces, and I know we've talked about that before with this one. Since there's already two existing green spaces, that was not really an issue, since this is linked up close to the other green space.
Right, right, it is, it is close to the other green space, and they are, they've got the green spaces, so in other sections, they've overcompensated, and so for all of the Hills of Town Creek, all Hills of Town Creek sections, excuse me, they have more than sufficient compensation green space.
And access to it, right?
Correct.
Do they have to leave their subdivision to get to the other green space if it's not in their section?
My understanding is they're planning on building a sidewalk.
All right. Do we know when, or if that's true, or?
That's what the developer has told us, and I don't know if that, if it's a whole building or if it's a commercial building, I don't know. I don't think that's going to be decided.
Be nice.
I'm not as familiar with our sidewalk ordinance, but I know it's in place, that if they didn't, you know, build the sidewalks, then they would probably contribute, you know, X number of dollars to a city sidewalk fund, or they could ask, you know, for a variance, you know, for that. Last sidewalk variance, I recall, was for the Business Park, Summit Business Park up on 1097, you know, they came and they said, "Look, you know, your ordinance is going to require us to build a sidewalk on 1097. There's no, it's not going anywhere on either end, you know, can we request a variance for that?" And through whatever, it's been too long, I don't know what the amount was, but they agreed to pay the city, you know, X number of dollars to go to sidewalks. In lieu of having to build one again on 1097, that just didn't really, you know, wouldn't serve anyone, wouldn't be anyone there at all, so.
Are we ready to make a motion?
Ready when whoever.
That would be great.
I'll move to approve the preliminary plat for the Hills of Town Creek, Section 5.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Okay, on to item number three, future land use plan, review and discuss.
The Commission, this future land use plan, again, as I mentioned a couple of times, is an unofficial document of the city, and it's really the tool that, you know, should guide or underpin ideas like, well, you know, should the city consider another type of single-family residential density, where, you know, we get away from all of these variances, and we give both the city, you know, as a governing body, and developers, a clear roadmap of, here's where we think things go. It's not a hard and fast rule, as again, you know, anything with future in the title is a guide, but the idea is the clearer we can make our intentions known, the more, you know, developers have some regularity and something that they can plan on and understand, so if they come and they say, "Well, you're turning this down, you're turning these variances down for these small lots," we've got something to say, "Well, this is why we did this, because we explained to you where the city would allow that type of residential development and where it wouldn't." And, you know, the same holds true on commercial zoning and multifamily zoning and all of that, it's just we don't see those types of things quite like we see the variances for single-family, you know, the smaller lot, single-family development. And so, what I wanted to do is to bring this to you guys, basically just to start a discussion, this isn't something that we're going to, you know, wrap up all discussion and be able to go to council at the next meeting with, but really what it's for is just to help us, you know, long become familiar with what this plan says. And again, it's been a number of years, the one that I'm, you know, that I have here on the table, and that's in your packet, was from 2019. I'm not sure there were a ton of updates on that 2019 one, I think it may have just reflected some changes in the ETJ boundary, that was about the time that we did the Coral Isle ETJ annexation. So, what I thought we might do is, rather than us all sit at our own screens and look to these, you know, look at this map and try and figure out, you know, what we're talking about, if we just wanted to get around the table and look at it, be able to talk about, you know, this is where this is, this is where that is, compare it with our existing zoning, maybe just get some ideas, again, with the goal of just starting a conversation, giving staff some stuff to look at, and being able to come back to you guys and say, "Hey, you know, here's some revisions, do we think we're ready to get our city council's input," which may take, you know, a new turn in and of itself, right? It's, you know, we're an advisory board to them. So, the idea is that we put a lot of thought and study into it, so that, so they're able to look at something that's, you know, is well thought out, and then be able to build on that.
One thing that I like, you know, looking at this, and I know, you know, this has been brought up time and time again, and it's just been dropped, because I don't think anybody knows where to go with this. I would like to see a definition of what a planned development District 1 is, the FAVs, what can and can't be done, what we can and cannot do. The same thing with Mike's place on 1097, what can and can't be done. I mean, that's, we've got to start, before we start throwing stuff out, we've got to know what we can and cannot do.
Right.
You know, we all know what commercial and industrial and all that means, but, you know, to make decisions, we have to know where we're going.
Right.
And I think that's the reason why, you know, this has kind of been put on the back burner, same thing as the historical was brought up three or four years ago. I mean, it's dead again, because nobody has a direction on what anybody in Historical District wants. We don't know.
Right.
You know, I don't, I didn't, I'm not part of the Historical Committee there, so I don't know what they want or don't want.
Right.
And if we don't know, then it gets dropped, and then stuff comes up, and then everybody's taken back, you know, "Whoa, how did that happen?" Well, it's too late now.
Right. The, I can, you know, to, what I can do, I can grab a map from my office on the, on the planned development, so on the FAV, or on Buffalo Springs' planned development, the vast majority of that is, zoned is not the right word, because the zoning is planned development district, but what he had to submit as part of his request, or as part of the PDD process, is you have to submit a proposed land plan. And he, there are a couple of small areas that were designated single-family, you know, the original section of Buffalo Springs was about that. The, the other 95% of the land that's within the PDD is designated as mixed use. Mixed use is a, is a way of saying anything. It could be commercial, it could be multifamily, it could be single-family, it could be industrial, it, I mean, industrial is kind of far-fetched, right? You know, because it's, you know, the value of land is not going to, you know, dictate that there's going to be, you know, a heavy industry build. But the vast majority of the land that's in that PDD is zoned, or is labeled as mixed use. And again, mixed use gives him a lot of latitude.
I'd say that's, you know...
And, you know, that's, you know, one of those things, you know, when it was adopted in 2004, you know, there were some development agreements that went along with that, that said, you know, mainly how and when any infrastructure improvements get, you know, are able to get, you know, reimbursed, you know, from the city to the developer based on, you know, an increase in added loan tax and things like that. But when those agreements expire, the PDD stays forever. You know, unless it is, you know, I don't know the process to dissolve one, or to amend one, to say, "Okay, look, it's all going to just go to regular, you know, zoning like the rest of the city." Even when those development agreements expire, the PDD and the regulations that are surrounding the PDD all stay in place. They, it's, you know, like, you know, like any other zone, it never goes away unless it's changed generally at, you know, either, you know, at the request of the city, and in a PDD case, you know, the, you know, the property owner would never, or would likely never agree to, you know, to amend that, because it's, well, I need, is, you know, the purpose of them is to give the developer as much flexibility within a really loose set of guidelines, you know, as, you know, as he can have. So, it, you know, unlike, say, we're going to rezone this from commercial to single-family residential, it, there's a lot more implications there, because again, he's giving up the mixed-use designation that says, "Well, I'm going to let the market decide what this is going to be, and if my homes are selling well, then I'm going to build more of those, and if my commercial's selling well, then I'm going to build more of that," you know, and, which is kind of the purpose of the PDD. We've done PDDs, there's a couple more in the city, one is on, you know, they're right next to, they're both on Prairie Street, one's Hodgepodge Lodge, one is the Oaks. I don't, I can't quite follow the dots on why, why a PDD was given for one small, single property, that is classic special use permit.
Right.
Meaning that, you know, hey, it's, you know, zone residential, but you can do X, Y, and Z on. When you're talking about a small parcel of land, you don't need the flexibility that you do if you're developing 800 acres. So, it's, you know, again, they're there, they're in place, but I just don't quite follow the steps on the, how it got there. So, but like a special use permit, all PDDs are different. In other words, the ones for Hodgepodge Lodge aren't mixed use, where you can do anything you want, or the Oaks, where he can do anything he wants, it's, you know, very narrow, saying, you know, you can do this and this, but it's not like you could, you know, build a commercial building there or something like that. Take the Oaks as an example, one of the requirements is he can't add any buildings to that property without either undoing his PDD. So, that would be a reason to get out on if he said, "Man, I, you know, I've got this great idea for this building that's going to go here, but the only way I can do it is get rid of my PDD," because that tells me, that tells the city and me that I can't do anything, you know, that involves a new building.
Didn't that come up a few months back on city council about the FAVs, PDD?
Right, he was going to, he, he had a, and you guys may have heard about, there's a historic house there south of Tenham, and, you know, Miles Marks, the owner of the Oaks, was going to, and he was going to get this house, and he was going to move it on to his property, and it turned out that, well, one of the requirements in your PDD, if this thing moves forward, is we're going to have to either undo this, or, you know, some other mechanism to allow you to put a building there, because right now, the rules say you can't put another building there, and those were, you know, those were the rules.
I think he was trying to go the historical, he was trying to confirm that it was a historical, it was true historical that was part of the plan.
Right, and then, I think, you know, as with most, you know, real houses, it turned out that the moving, it was the real expense, it wasn't the cost of the house, it was the moving, that, that got really expensive really quick. And so, he, you know, submitted to us, and we had the discussion, it went to council, and I think, you know, council, you know, a lot of it is just, you know, timing on council. If they just paid a whole lot of bills and somebody comes looking for something, it's going to have a different, you know, reception than if you hadn't spent money all year, and you're looking for a great, you know, historical project, it's just kind of the nature of timing and how it all fits into the big picture, and I don't think you got a super favorable, or at least an open reception to the city in terms of, yes, it's worth this, I think at the time, he thought it was going to be about $150,000 to get the building from A to B, and it, you know, we looked at it, you know, the city looked at it a little bit as well, you know, when, when it was, you know, kind of without, you know, without him in the, sort of in the mix, if you will, because the owner said, "Well, this deal with Miles, you know, didn't work out," they were still trying to find someone to, you know, to take on the home and to, you know, to move it and hopefully save it. And, you know, the 150 turned out to be much less than, than what the city could, could get the building and use it for, you know, use it for something, you know, today, like office space, or, you know, some type of visitor bureau, or, you know, some type of usable space, because it's, and it's a home, and so it was a lot of retrofit, even after you get it from here to there, get all the utilities hooked up, get the apartment stuff, ADA accessibility, all that stuff taken care of, then you got to remodel it from the house...
To commercial.
...to some type of functional, you know, space for, you know, for city use, and so it didn't, didn't really go anywhere either, so.
And the other question I have is, when we're talking about the high and low density, how are those, let's say, we say a low-density area, we want lots no smaller than a half-acre, okay? Does that have to go through an ordinance?
Yep, so what we would do is we would look at it and say, you know, so our standards today are 75 feet, you know, worth of street frontage by 120-foot depth, that's a third-acre lot, you know, that would, you know, and so we could look at it to say, "Well, ultimately, we think 3-zone, or 3-residential districts are what we want, we want this, you know, kind of our..." We want this, you know, kind of our standard lot that we've always had. We would like a smaller lot or, and/or we would like that larger lot. You know, we might, you know, decide that there's an area of the city based on, you know, likely the topography or, you know, the feat, you know, just the general land features. We might say, well, this needs to be large lot, you know, half-acre larger lots, you know. I don't know that, you know, we've obviously not had, because you don't have to ask for a variance, you know, on that piece of it. The large lots are just, you know, developed because you don't need the variances, just here's the minimum. And so we only really saw, you know, when, when they would come to us and, and say, we would like to go smaller. I don't really know that there's any, you know, there's no harm in saying, you know, we would like a large lot area. But because of the way that the regulations are structured, if you wanted to build a larger lot, you could, there's nothing stopping you from doing that. You know, you could, you know, taking Redbird Meadows out here that, that they're talking about, that's getting closer to seeing some final land plans. About two-thirds of their homes are half-acre lots or larger. So they wouldn't need a variance or anything to do that. It's just based on, you know, what they think the economics of, you know, development's gonna be. But if they have these areas where it got smaller, you know, density, then they'd have to come and say, hey, we wanna build a smaller.
And that would, if we, if, if, if there was an area that was a high density and somebody came in and wanted to build lower, smaller lots and they'd have to ask for a variance again, correct?
I don't know that, I don't, I don't think it'd be structured that way because I think it would be, you would be able to build something larger.
I mean, small, if it was a high dens- or a low density, but then they wanted to come in and build.
You know, high density, then.
They'd have to go, have to go to the ordinance, through a variance and, okay.
Right.
And that variance would apply in the beginning through the end? Say if there were five sections or eight sections or whatever, that variance transfers to each section?
Only if they came forward with, only if the request was, you know, for all eight sections at the beginning. So, so if, you know, taking Hills of Ten Creek, you know, as an example, you know, when they did section two, they just asked for the variances there because, again, they, you know, they likely expected that the rest of it was going to develop out as, you know, the rest of the neighborhood. But at the time, they didn't have control of section five, it was in, you know, another landowner's hands. So they didn't know if there was a section five or not. So if, if they only asked for, you know, section two, that's all they get. And so they've gotta, you know, hope, in essence, that the city said, if, if they plan on doing the same thing over and over, they're, they're starting from square one on every ask. But if they came and said, we're looking at, you know, eight sections and we wanna button all this up at one time and we're gonna ask for all eight at once, then they would have all eight. So they wouldn't have to come back when they did, you know, the plans for section two or three or four. So.
Just out of interest, it kind of gives us a little history. The pink areas, which are high, residential high density, it does look like all this grew out of the reality of what's already existing. In other words, from the apartments at the high school, because it's the high school and the apartments, you know, I can see where it kind of grows from that. Same thing with the apartments behind Brookshire Brothers and the assisted living. That, is that kind of the way sometimes things, they, they start like a core and then that kind of becomes, it's also because of location too. I'm just, I guess I'm just asking, you know, how, how did this evolve to get where we are now? And, and let me just mention, and at the same time, I know this came up last meeting about ETJs. And I, I think part of our discussion, just out of interest tonight, would be, you know, it does, it absolutely seems like the ETJ will expand also over time.
Right, so this, so.
When should we do that?
It does take into account that land out in the ETJ. And so that is a good, you know, thing to point out is that, that this future land use plan, even though we're planning for certain districts that are in our ETJ and outside the city, we wouldn't actually be zoning that. It's, again, just a guiding document to say, if this is annexed by the city, then we are planning on it being this type of reuse. So, so our actual zoning will always stop at our city limits. But again, the, the concept or the idea behind an ETJ is it's gonna be in your city one day. And that's, that's the fundamental reason that the state allows for an ETJ to begin with is, and is why they give cities control over the subdivision of land. So what happens in our ETJ is largely out of the control of the city. They don't need a building permit from the city. We can't ask for building permits or for them to follow our body ordinances. But when it comes to subdivision of land, the state says, there's a reasonable expectation that this is gonna be inside your city limits one day. So you do have a say in how you, you know, allow that land to be subdivided. So if someone was in our ETJ and said, we're gonna do one of these small lot subdivisions, they would need, they have to follow our subdivision regulations just like they were inside the city. They just wouldn't need, you know, a building permit for every house they build because we don't have the authority to, to require that. But to your earlier question, it is kind of a mix of, you know, what's on the ground today, what we can, you know, what we can glean from conversations with landowners. The big piece there that's in the peak on the south side of the map, there with the Randall, which is under the control of the Randall family. That's, again, just based on conversations, you know, that's just kind of a best guess right now. You know, when, you know, to use them as an example. The son likes ranching, has no need for, you know, to sell land at any point. So, you know, if you talk to him, you know, one year, he may say, man, I'm never planning on doing anything. And then, you know, but it doesn't mean he's not willing to talk to the developer. You know, I mean, everything's for sale at the right price. But it's, you know, he may or may not, you know, want to develop it at any point. So sometimes you're, you're even making a guess in absence of any solid input, you know, from the landowner. You obviously want something that's willing to coincide with the needs of the city and what, you know, his view of his property is. But it's not a, there's not an exact science on trying to pin it down. And, you know, you look around and see, you know, like the high school and the apartments. And well, if this, you know, was starting to develop this way, it's probably gonna, you know, continue that, you know, trend. And again, it's kind of a best, you know, use, you know, making the best estimate that you can with the limited information that you have at the time.
What is apartments in the high or is there separate?
It would be in the multifamily, so it's gonna be in the orange.
The multi, oh, I got you, I got you.
So those two little orange spots there, those are where the existing apartments in the city are. Our multifamily zone also does include things like the trailer park here down, you know, you know, down on Plantersville Road. Also includes live-up assisted living is all zoned as multifamily. And even though it's not the traditional apartment, you know, type, you know, development that we think about.
So the apartments back on ten ninety-seven were built in the FEV's, multi, mixed use?
Mixed use.
Okay, okay.
So.
So the best thing to do is really take control of the mixed use?
That is the biggest unknown that we have that I've been able to, or in my opinion, that's the biggest unknown that we have, hands down. Is, is there's a lot of land that can be anything that is conducive to the developers' plans at the time.
And they can do what they want because they got the PDD's.
Yep, yep. And so it's, you know, it is one of those things where there's, there's, it takes a lot of faith on both sides, right? Now, in, you know, my estimation, the development agreement or, or rather the PDD agreement, when it locks things in place forever, he doesn't need a lot of faith on his side. It's, it's, you know, black and white. But, you know, a lot of times, you know, again, you know, this was a, you know, radically different place in two thousand and four and that seemed like a really big thing for the city that was, you know, and most development agreements like that or most PDD's aren't structured to be in place for, you know, fifteen or twenty years. Generally, the developer's gonna have a five-to-ten-year timeline. And I, if I had to guess, that was the, you know, that was the expectation on both sides. I don't think anybody on the city council, when they approved that, you know, foresaw three or four years later. You know, although in Texas, if you live around the oil markets long enough, you ought to know what the oil markets are gonna do and they're gonna be finicky and they're gonna throw you a wrench just when you didn't see one coming. So there, you know, I, but I have a feeling that the expectation was in, you know, somewhere between seven and ten years expecting to see all of Buffalo Springs built out. And it just didn't transpire that way. So, you know, when I first moved here, it was, there were a handful of houses in Buffalo Springs and it didn't seem like they were being, you know, they weren't really being added too pretty fast. And now you look at it and it's, you know, you think, gosh, this, you know.
Yeah, the two thousand and eight recession really hit it for a while.
Yeah, it hit hard and, you know, this, you know, he was at kind of the leading edge of, I think, you know, the price point of homes out, you know, in the area. When, you know, when we moved here and, you know, young kids, you know, out of school and thinking, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, my gosh, man, how in the world does anybody ever live in that? You know, then, you know, on, you know, just a handful of years later, it's, that's a, you know, starter home and those homes are now, you know, three hundred plus.
There was a builder that came in and bailed him out, bought up a bunch of those lots. So saved his, his backside pretty good.
Yeah, because when, you know, if the development stalls like that, I mean, there's, you know, there's a momentum that they have to have.
Dirt rich.
Yeah, yeah, he, yeah, he is, yeah, absolutely. You know, he's, you know, you've got a lot of land, but it's, you know, you still need, you know, you still need cash flow, you know, to make things happen.
Yeah.
So our, our best, our best defense is on the, on the, or the high residential areas that are marked is we need to stick to our guns on the lot size.
Right.
That's about, that's about the only ammunition we have is that that's what seventy-five by a hundred or whatever it is.
Seventy-five by one-twenty.
One-twenty and say, no, you know, this is it.
That's council's per capita.
Yep.
We can only make suggestions.
If there is a, if there's a mechanism that the city has to compel someone to get rid of a, a PDD, if the city had a, you know, one of the high-density, single-family residential and said, we're not giving a variance anywhere outside the areas that we delineated as high-density residential. Well, you know, if he comes in and says, hey, I wanna do this, you know, these are what people are buying. I wanna do these small lots. I'm sorry, major locked into the two thousand and four ordinances and the two thousand and four ordinances require you to build a seventy-five-by-one-twenty lot and we're not moving off of it. I mean, that's kind of the, you know, not, you know, trying to, not trying to be, you know, obstinative or, you know, obstructionist, you know, for anyone. But it's, you know, to me would seem fair then to say, that was the agreement that both sides willingly entered into and, you know, this is the plan the city has now for the growth and development of the city going forward.
I'm, I'm just scared if we keep giving these smaller lots, I mean, that we're just, we're gonna be overrun with traffic.
We already are.
You know, our services are gonna go downhill because, you know, if you can put, you know, I mean, like, like, you know, the, up at, by the once a school, I mean, three or four more homes versus, you know, three less and, you know, let's say five homes. I mean, that's, that's a lot of people. That's still, you know, and that adds to it. And, you know, we've got the subdivision going, that's mud going up out here off of Plantersville Road, which is going, you know, it's not in our, but it's gonna add traffic and services.
Right.
And the one by the, out by the high school, we don't have control over. But the people are still gonna be coming through one oh five.
Right.
And it's gonna put a strain on our city police. You know, it's, at some point, there has to be a, saying, hey, guys, we gotta, we gotta, you know, put a moratorium or something.
Right, and I think, you know, again, our best, you know, to me, our best and clearest tools are to say, we've got a future plan that we're going for and we've got these zones that allow this or allow that. And that's where we're at. So everybody knows the rules, everybody plays by the same rules. And then if there's a compelling reason that you can convince, you know, the city council as a zoning board of adjustments to allow, you know, something other than what's there, then you can. But it's not a, just because we only have one, you know, paintbrush now, but we recognize we need a couple more. Which is kind of where we're at now, which is more of just an ad hoc, you know, case-by-case basis. So, yeah, you know, maybe this one needs a second brush instead of just the one we have. But if we can define those areas and tell, you know, and, you know, tell those developers, look, if you're interested in this partial plan, you see very clearly what it's zoned and the city's not really interested in rezoning on the fly, if you will. And, and by splitting out those two, you know, single-family districts, then, you know, again, it gives us a rational, you know, fallback to say, this is why we're doing what we're doing. Not just saying no because we said yes twice before and we don't say yes, you know, three times in a row. It's because you're developing this, this is where, you know, the city sees that, you know, happening and where we see, you know, that's what's.
To help with that, could we have maybe something that shows a percentage of, we've always said, you know, we've gotta have some high-density and some, so maybe we say, okay, we've hit the limit now on that fifty-foot, fifty-five footers, whatever it is. And we gotta, to get our average where it used to be, we need to be at seventy-five.
Right, you know, and by talking about it in big blocks, if you will, you know, zooming out from a specific site, it's, it's very easy to make that case. You know, when you tell somebody on a specific lot or, or, you know, a, you know, a specific neighborhood thing, it's really tricky to say, well, we're falling back to our percentages over here, which are general, but we're applying it specifically to you. If we lock those percentages in on a plan that everybody has access to, everybody can see, then when we tell them, well, no, it's because, you know, right now, here's the mix that we said we wanted. Everybody knew that mix when, you know, when the conversation started and this is why we're doing what we're doing. And then you look at, you know, say like where, where we've, you know, put, at least in terms of this plan, and it's a lot like your commercial areas, is you wouldn't wanna pick a spot not near a major, you know, core of the transportation where you're surrounded by large lots. You don't wanna put right in the middle of that, you know, a high-density, you know, development because then you're, well, you know, it's not consistent with the general, you know, development of the land, but you're also back to those services. Hey, you know, these are residential streets and you're adding, you know, twenty percent more vehicular traffic by this high density and that's why we're telling you, you know, having a justified reason to say, no, we're not doing that. But it's, it is tough to say no. And I've said it before that, you know, we never set, you know, a precedent, you know, from one to the next. But in absence of a clear plan, it's hard to say no.
That's the thing.
It's very hard to say no. You know, because again, everybody thinks, well, you know, just a little bit, you know, we're not talking about that much here. We're only talking about five or ten more homes, but you do that twenty times and suddenly you're talking about a lot of them.
And I think the last few meetings that we've had, we've, I think, at least one of us each meeting have brought to the attention of, here's another variance, why are we doing this variance? When did it come through? And even though we all sat here and we all listened, it, they, the variances keep slipping and there is nothing set for us to go by. And here's the standard, even though we know the seventy-five-by-one-twenty, yes, that's a standard. But if we can put it in writing where, look, when you overview this area and you wanna build, this is the standard and we're not, we're not budging.
It almost seems like there's a new standard that, you know, the, the one-third acre lot is pie in the sky out of, you know, it's, it's become the high-end lot and nobody can touch it. So we're gonna, we're gonna lean on variances so that we can, you know.
Well, yeah, and I understand that. You brought a good point too last time about putting more strain on, on everything, utility. I will say that on the Lake Creek, what is it, Lake Creek dump and live work? The, you know, the first two phases were the smaller lots. They learned a lesson on that on the right first one. It was zero, zero bottom line.
That was supposed to be in a retirement.
Yeah, and they had come back, yeah. And they, what's, typically, we live in an area of a lot of elevation and drainage. So they had to come back and tweak some things and hopefully that does. But my point is, you know, the third phase, they call the estates, those did go up. But my point is, you know, the third phase, they call the estates, those did go up to 75-foot lots. So, I will say Phillip did do a mix there. Those, we were glad to see 75 there. And in, in the new one, the Town Creek Crossing, uh, they did come back and went for the, they had lots there too on the next, I think it's the second or third.
Thanks to, there were, uh, section two.
So, there is some of that happening, but I understand. We got tired of hearing this 55-foot.
So, how, how do we, how do we come up with what percentage we have now?
Yeah.
How do we come up with that percentage now? Because I know we're way, we're way high on the high-density.
Seems like we are.
But if, but if, if we somehow, I don't know how we do it, come up with what percentage we have now, then that way we could say, we could come up with a, a game plan and say, okay, this is where we wanna get to. And this is kind of the percentage, we, we, we need to get to more of the low-density. We wanna get to this percentage and that's kind of where we wanna stay.
I think that's a, you know, the wonderful thing about, uh, GIS is I can see the path to get us there. That's something that we can look at, you know, from a land area perspective, look at what's developed and then kind of layer on top of that and say, and here's the rest of the land that's right now just zone single-family residential. So, we've got, you know, X amount is high-density right now, X amount is the normal standard that didn't need a variance, here's how much is left to be developed in terms of single-family. So, where do we wanna guide that? And I think by looking at what we have, and I think a lot of it will just be, you know, you know, there's not a, there's not a standard necessarily that we could use, but I think if we, I think we'll know it, you know, we'll know what feels right, you know, by seeing where we're at now. And then, okay, here's where we wanna go.
Yeah, if we wanna, you know, say we wanna, you know, stay within that 70, 30, 60, 40 mix, then when somebody comes in the door and we go, "Okay, Dave, where are we at right now?"
Right.
Well, you know, can't do it.
Right, you know, and then, you know, hopefully, you know, like, you know, again, you know, kind of my hope is, I see the, the, uh, the future land use plan as being the first step into the creation of a new zoning district that would, you know, then formalize, you know, in essence, those areas within our city that are in the future land use plan that we say, here's where we're zoning this higher-density residential. And then that's where we're sticking. And, you know, you, you back into that with those percentages to say, here's what we've got now, here's where our goal is, okay, where, you know, where do we put those percentages to where they feel right? And again, it's, you know, if things, you know, change over time, of course they will, but.
That's why we embarrasses.
Well, and some of this doesn't take into account yet about what's going on in Conroe's ETJ, like, for example, out on 2854, you know? That's a lot of high-density coming. And, you know, that, that's, that brings, that brings a lot more revenue into the city, but it puts pressure on.
And we don't get that tax money.
No.
Right.
They're, they're gonna be coming through our town and we don't get any, you know.
Well, they may shop here.
Well, I mean, property tax, I mean, the big, the big stuff.
Right.
From, from the developer's perspective, that's the other side that you wanna consider is, you want to, yes, you wanna have standards and, you know, these are, these are the areas that we have designated for high-density, for low-density and those are very important. From the developer's perspective, you wanna try to find that balance to not be so restrictive that the developer's gonna go just outside the city limits.
Exactly.
And then, like you're saying, you still have all the traffic on your roads, you still have all the people that are coming through the city using city facilities, using city resources, but you're not generating the appropriate tax value. So, you don't want, while you want to, you know, have your, your future plan and this vision for however it develops, you don't wanna become a city that developers don't wanna develop in.
Yeah, yeah.
But wouldn't the developer be appreciative of us being able to let them know that, hey, look, you wanna do in multifamily, you wanna, you know, you wanna do a variance and make the lot smaller and we could show them what we already have and what's selling and what's, you know, what's being productive in our area? I mean, it would be, it would be good for a developer to see what it is that we're talking about. Do an overlay of the map and say, "Hey, over here is 60 homes that are 55 feet, you know, by 100 feet. Over here, you've got 75 by 120 over here," and then they see.
And we've got the infrastructure plan in place to support that. And that's part of the problem that the developers have is, you know, what they have to bring to the table to hook everything up and make it work, you know? So, if.
Yeah, that's, that's where the engineering is.
Exactly. That was gonna be my question.
You're trying to stay ahead of it and you do have a lot of long-term formulas for.
But there's a lot coming past. There's a lot developing outside of city limits that are coming in 2854, coming right past all this coming, you know, high-density residential. So, you know, it's really gonna be a lot of high-density, um,
Yeah, we can't.
south of 105 and east of, you know, 149.
Wouldn't you think a formula could be put together or an overlay of the map so that we could see the, how much we have to, if it's a 34, you know, a 30, 70 or whatever, huh?
Pretty comfortable that we can do that by the next meeting. You know, again, we're talking about, you know, the tools that we have now to be able, you know, do that, you know, even versus five years ago or, you know.
So, we'll compare the two where the engineers have looked from the outside and us looking from the inside. Then that way, we can make a, an educated decision or a suggestion or, you know, something that we can do to make it better for us here in Montgomery.
You know, and then, you know, one of the, you know, there's, there's a, there's several layers to the, you know, sort of to the zoning district, you know, thought. Again, one of my long-term goals has been the, I think we can safely eliminate the industrial zone from our zoning classifications. Again, back to that in-city versus out-of-city. You know, the dynamics of, you know, land prices and things don't make it in, you know, inside, you know, a city often where it doesn't make financial sense for someone to, to do, you know, an industrial yard when you're buying land by the square foot. It makes it, you know, it makes sense where they, you know, buy it by the acre.
Is that industrial? Is that the old mill?
That one is probably zone commercial still.
There's a red one.
That is Spirit Industries. So, that was kind of a, a unique thing in that, I think, I, I think when we first did zoning, I think it, for some reason, maybe it was their name, you know, industry.
Okay.
And they thought, oh, well, you know, but, but their manufacturing and stuff didn't immediately fit into, you know, a commercial type use and so I, I think that was the, was the reason behind it. But, you know, the reality is, you know, even when you look at the overchops, you know, in Summit Business Park, I don't think there's anybody in there that truly fits in an industrial classification because of these office warehouse things or, you know, more of a commercial business, you know, HVAC, you know, company or something like that where, you know, again, the industrial use, it's either, you know, there's, again, just don't see the, I've not seen the industry show up and, you know, there, there's still opportunity zones out there. If you guys had heard about opportunity zones a couple of years ago, you know, we're not in an opportunity zone. Um, our, you know, our, uh, the median, median income, you know, home values and all that don't make this, uh, you know, a place for that to work. So, if someone is really looking for an industry, if they go 10 miles west just into Grimes County, they just hit an opportunity zone where there's a whole lot more tax advantages
Yeah.
to doing something than there would be here. And so, again, that's where it's, you know, it comes down to kind of the cost of, you know, the land. And certainly, if it's an industry that needs, you know, a lot of infrastructure, a lot of water use or, you know, something like that, then they're, you know, you know, weighing the options of, okay, does it make sense to go where I can get these services? Or is it cheaper for me to provide the services on my own via a well or, you know, something like that? But, you know, but I do think that, you know, in looking at the industrial use around, we just, I don't think, you know, the city of Montgomery and the land area that we have, it doesn't make a lot of sense for, which is why we haven't seen a lot of those true industrial, you know, you know, businesses come in, in the 16 years that I've been, you know, involved in zoning this. Not to say it will never happen, you know, at all, you know, we, you know, none of us know what.
That opportunity zone ship sailed a long time ago.
Yeah.
50, 100 years ago, so.
Right, right. So, the, but I think, you know, there's, again, there's a lot of, you know, pieces and parts to looking at, you know, at our zoning and our future land use, but to me, the big one, the one that really moves the needle for us and really helps get us on the direction to where we wanna go in terms of our plan is that, you know, the high-density versus low-density. Because, man, we see that discussion, you know, it, it, you know, comes before us all the time. So, kind of going for the, you know, where, you know, where can we make the biggest impact?
Well, that, right there, that map is like a quarter of city limits is high-density, you know? So, that's quite a bit.
Right, right. And, you know, and again, it's, you know, one of those things that if we can start to put those numbers to it and we've got a rational process that we can follow and say, "Hey, that, that doesn't feel right to us anymore." That, you know, we, you know, if that happens, we're not going to be looking at the type of development, you know, long-term that we want, you know, for, you know, for a city.
With a PDD directly north of there, you know, where you could have high-density, you know, if the develop, I mean, you, you've got the potential for quite a bit to be high-density.
I, I, that had to have been based on a local conversation at the time. If you see on the future land use plan, what is basically the border for Armstrong today was, you know, looking to be a PDD on there. Again, you know, that, you know, could have been because at the time, you know, a developer was looking at that to develop and, you know, for whatever reason, just, you know, it didn't happen. But, but I did wonder about that same thing. I thought, well, that's, that's weird to, to expect a PDD to show up one day because there's such unique things that it's not, it's, it's not like, you know, a commercial district or something like that. So.
Uh, just for clarification, on the bottom left, that ETJ that looks kind of like a U, is that extension of 149?
It is. It is. Just, you know, as opposed to having the map, you know, be that much longer if you just slide that over in your mind's eye to, to go down, it goes down to Spring Branch Road and then looks back up around.
It's, it's funny how those things take shape like that.
Right. That, you know, without question, that was a strip annexation that.
Aniconda.
Went away somehow.
Yeah. Let's try to wrap around.
Yeah, from what I had heard, it was, I think it was a question of, you know, a developer out there wanting to provide or, you know, wanting the city to provide services.
Yeah.
And somehow that just never materialized. The ETJ stayed, but the, the one-foot annexation that's, you know, no longer allowed, that went away, but the ETJ stayed. And if you see over on the side, that, the, the wonderful thing about that ETJ is that's the wall of Con, you know, to, to Conroe's ETJ, you know, that almost ensures that, you know, that we won't ever just be totally swallowed, you know, and, and, you know, all the way encircled, uh, by Conroe because they've got a long way that they've gotta get around, you know, gotta get around first.
Somebody had a futuristic eye when they did that, when they thought about that.
How does Conroe pull this off compared to Montgomery?
So, their ET, well, on.
In terms of expanding their ETJ?
So, so based on their population size, is it five miles? I think it's five miles. So, so the size of city they are, their ETJ, ours goes half a mile. When you're a city the size of Conroe, your ETJ goes five miles. So, they, so their ETJ is way, way away from their city limits. They now, they, with their annexations, now they, all cities in Texas have to play by the same rules that we've always played by, which is we can only annex land voluntarily. If the landowner comes to us and says, "Would you, you know, you know, we'd like to be in your city. We want to petition you for annexation." So, my guess is Conroe knew that was coming for several years and so that's why we saw April Sound a number of years ago was annexed and, you know, the areas, you know, down Walden, you know, but their, you know, rush to annex land and grab land in either annexation or ETJ, I think they understood that the rules were going to change. Now, all cities, you know, any annexation is voluntary. If, if the landowner doesn't want it, it would be very, very hard for a city to do. And I don't know that they could, you know, find a way to annex.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, of course, with Lake Conroe, one and two was kind of natural, the 73. But, you know, it's not unusual with a city, they've got the resources, so that's attractive to the people on the outside that don't have city, city sewers, city water. And so, you, it's, you can't blame that for happening in a way because they're the ones that have the resources to, to make that happen.
Right.
We have to be good neighbors and we just have to.
No, we don't.
Try.
You know, there was a, you know, there was a story, you know, a number of years ago. When they built the Walmart, they, you know, they first came to the city of Montgomery and, you know, you know, depending on the story that you, you know, hear, it's, it's, well, we, there was no way that we could serve them and I would, I, that's my belief is that there was just, there's, you know, for a city that, you know, whenever Walmart was built, the size of facilities that we had, there was no way we could get fire flow over there. And, and so they went to Conroe and so Conroe said.
That's why I was wondering that.
You know, and now some people say, "Well, you know, the town of Montgomery just didn't wanna grow up the town." That was probably true, but it can also be true that there was just no way.
There was no way we could have done.
No way it's grown.
That's a heavy lift. Yeah, it's.
So, um, so that's how you see, you know, their city limits, you know, when their city limits came to, you know, to Walden Road. And again, it was a one-foot strip that took all the way down 105 because they didn't want all the stuff, you know, they didn't wanna serve all the stuff on either side, but they were willing to get the Walmart, you know, for the sales count.
Sure.
And, and while they were there, they went down to Delago and grabbed.
Took all the high-dollar stuff.
Right.
The low-density.
So, yeah, I think it's loud and clear. I think we all, it would, it would go a long way to help us feel really good about what we do here if we have that percentage.
Absolutely. I would agree with that. And again, you know, you, you know, wanted to start this conversation because in absence of starting it, you're never gonna get done and.
You don't know where you are if you don't have a plan, Dave.
Yep, you know, where they say, you know, a, a, a failure to plan is planning to fail.
Yes.
So.
Has, has this been formally adopted?
It is not. It was never adopted. I'm not sure. I don't really recall. Don't know why, you know, it wasn't adopted.
I think it just got, it got handed out and that was just.
Yeah, and like, hey, you know, it looks good. Do we have to do anything? No, okay.
Do you foresee something, do you foresee something becoming adopted?
I think it would strengthen the city's, again, you know, this, it would strengthen our messaging to, to, uh, potential developers who are looking at the area to see, ah, they've got an adopted future land use plan. They must really mean it. So, you know, when they come to us, it's not, well, this is our unofficial guide and this is the way we would like to see things develop versus, you know, the city really speaking, you know, with a firm voice and, you know, you know, via the council saying, "Hank, you know, we would like to adopt this plan and."
What we would like to avoid is the work putting, that we put in, given that we volunteer our time to do this and then stand back and watch politics between, you know, of a developer with influence to undo it. So, you know, I, I really want, if we're gonna put the time in, I wanna encourage that, you know, city leadership and whatnot are dedicated in terms of using this, you know, the work in this as a tool as opposed to a, you know, inconvenience.
Right, absolutely. I can understand that for sure. And I think that's, you know, something that, you know, again, if, you know, and that's on staff, right? You know, not all on staff because you don't manage up.
Yeah.
You know, their, you know, councils, you know, you know, does what they're, you know, what they wanna do and that's why we elect those folks, you know, to sit there. But I think a well-thought-out, you know, plan and a rationale behind why this is important, you know, from an active and engaged, uh, uh, P and Z commission goes a long way to, you know, to strengthening that, "Hey, guys, that's why y'all appointed us here and we're making this recommendation to you. We've got staff, you know, who's, who has, you know, helped us, you know, to put this, you know, to put the numbers to it. You know, let's, you know, let's take some action on it." And again, you, you know, see that through. So, we're not sitting here in a few years, you know, ad hoc, you know, variance by variance by variance, you know, crossing our fingers hoping that it's all gonna work out.
Yeah, and speaking of developers, you know, we know absolutely there's gonna be growth. be growth, so, we've talked about this before, don't try to stop it, but try to really have a good working relationship with developers that have, how am I saying, uh, they want to do it right. I mean, we see, we look around, there's all, there's a new one going into Willis, right up near the freeway, that was not, uh, that's not high-density, it's, you know, there's a lot of stuff going in that's pretty big lots, and, what I'm trying to say, that's not cheap land either, so, but we know taxes, I mean, I know Phillip has complained a lot about the taxes that have gone up, so there is, is a balancer, but.
Some beautiful stuff coming into Willis.
My point.
Absolutely beautiful stuff coming.
Yeah, that one on thirteen-seventy-five, it's going to be good, right up near the freeway too, but just in the woods, but, you know, I think, we don't want to look at the developer as the bad guy, if, if we can just have a good reputation builders that do it right, and they, you know, it's to their advantage too, to do it right, we don't want cookie cutter everywhere.
Well, that big old pink, that big old pink area right there, that's a pretty lucrative area to be building, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, we got to remember, I mean, in close to the city.
We got to hold our chips, you know, we have, we do have a stack of chips, you know, that, that, you know, are, are, could be put in play if they're done right, you know, so.
So I think on the next week, so we'll come back to those, uh, uh, the percentages on kind of where we're at, and, you know, hopefully some ideas on, you know, what, you know, kind of a starting point on a target would be, that we can look at and talk about, we may also look at this and say, you know, okay, there's some areas that we can go ahead and say that's not going to happen there, you know, should it be this, to kind of, again, just kind of give us, you know, a couple of next steps to look at, not anything set in stone, but, and again, just a couple of follow-up, you know, points on that, so.
Okay.
And these, these, um, high-density residential areas on the west side of town are in prime locations as well, I mean, they really are, so, as far as mobility sake.
Right, and you got the little area, you got one-on-five area.
Yeah, so, there's something there to attract the developers.
Okay.
Uh, I think that's been a great discussion, I've got one thing I want to bring up under commission inquiry, so, but, anybody else got anything else for this? Anyone motion?
We don't really, we don't.
No, there's no action.
You know, a discussion outing, and I think we got the direction we need to bring something back that's possible for us.
All right, I think just timely to go along with what we've been discussing, I just wanted to ask Dave to discuss, just as much as you can, I mean, I know there's a lot of areas undecided, but, uh, from time to time, we do get questions about those two green spaces on either side, museum, on either side of the Pioneer Museum, Nate, Nate Davis, whatever, and I know the city's been looking at possibly purchasing or leasing those green spaces?
So we do lease those now, the city does have a lease on those now.
Okay, all right, good, because as planning and zoning, I think we, we want to be, kind of understand what is down the road, and this kind of ties in with the master, the comprehensive plan too, um, so, my question is, are, are those, are, those are two separate pieces owned by different owners?
Oddly enough, one piece of property separated by another one, but owned by the same owner.
Oh.
So, the, the, the family that owns the property now, the Jenny Adams, you know, property is what it's, you know, referred to, Ms. Adams is, uh, the, uh, descendant of the, you know, the original owner of it, and her mother gifted the, the middle section, the quarter acre or so that the Matt Hart Davis, uh, uh, and the McCullough officer on, she beaded that to the Montgomery Historical Society with the caveats that they would take up, you know, or, or, or that they would take care of the house as the maintained house. She recently has put the land up for sale, I'm not involved in the discussions, I know that there, you know, has been some discussion on the city's end of, well, you know, we've got a lease on that, and, you know, does our lease survive the sale, um, but, I really don't.
Yeah, I heard a couple, I had a just brief conversation with the mayor too, because we, everybody's been looking at this, it would be such a natural area for, you know, with the shaded trees, for, for the walkability, and having some benches and.
Right.
Tables, places for people to bring their food, because as we grow, there's going to be more, more food outlets, so, we, I bring it up because people have said, I'd hate to see that, you know, go to something else where some big building, and I know a part of the comprehensive plan was to have maybe a Montgomery, uh, some kind of a monument.
Right.
Could be great, uh, fairly close to the electronic sign, but there's still a lot of good space there with, with good shade trees, that would be really nice to, to utilize that.
You know, I know that the, you know, that the E D C does, you know, see the value in that property, you know, being, you know, kind of that, you know, visual gateway into downtown, um, you know, at least in terms of, you know, as they were moving through the design process, you know, that, you know, that, you know, property was, you know, was certainly contemplated, I should say, kind of stay in that, you know, green space, open space, so I do hope that something positive, you know, comes out of it.
I think there has been some maintenance issues with the buildings.
I did speak with Ms. Adams, who told me that, you know, she'd shared the concerns, and she felt like there was some maintenance that was.
So possibly, and I'm just throwing this out there for, you know, I don't, maybe in the future, if we get an update, it came up because it's for the sale, something's out there, we hate to see something happen, uh, so, but, uh, I guess, I don't know if we need to put anything on the future agenda about it, it just, if we could be updated possibly.
I know there's discussions, it's just, I know I'm not privy to those discussions, they, they rise above my, so, but I will keep you guys posted.
Well, there's a lot of interest.
You know, any information that, you know, that I can share, I certainly will, so.
Okay.
One other note, I'll follow on that, um, with respect to next month's meeting, March first, it's also our primary date, so this room is going to be used for our election primary, so we will be looking at an alternative date or an alternative location, um, we can look to, one option is to look to the community building, you know, can check the, you know, see if anyone has that, you know, rent it out, and, you know, we can secure that, we can look to be here in the same room, just on an alternate date, you know, it could be the Monday before, because they, you know, they're going to deliver all that stuff on Monday for the primary, and it can be set up in here, you know, most of the night, on Monday night before March first, so, next Tuesday's going to be a council meeting, one after that, uh, is an open Tuesday night, but then that's putting us back to, I don't know what the date is, but it's going to be kind of in the middle of March, M E D C meets the third Monday, so we are in the third of March, so if, in between now and then, if you guys have any thoughts now, or, you know, whether or not the community building, uh, P and Z meeting, you know, we should be in there at council for a number of years, if I go home, but.
I would personally prefer to move just the location off the date.
Right.
Baby's coming two days later, and so I will be tied up for weeks after that.
You're going to be busy?
Yeah, I might.
So, is anyone, would anyone be opposed to us looking at the community building for, you know, for that meeting day?
Not at all, not at all.
Perfect.
Well, even, is, is there, do you foresee much on this, well, if you have your, this plan ready, I want to see it, so.
Right, you know, certainly talking about this, you know, now, it's, you know, we wouldn't be deliberating on anything if I were to email you guys out that update, so we wouldn't have to, but in order to get, you know, in order to have this, the dialogue that we're having now, yes, we would need to have that meeting.
Okay.
I give the information to you, but, and you could give me comments, you know, individually, but it's obviously.
No, I would, yeah.
You know, you know, all of y'all, you know, being able to talk about it, being able to decide.
The community center would be, would be fine.
Okay.
We'll be together, and we can, you know, meet there.
Yep, I would love to make that happen, I'll confirm if you guys.
Yeah, that's a, that'd be a nice place to do it.
All right.
I moved to adjourn.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Who was upset?
Needing a turn?
Everybody. Pick a name.
Mary, I don't know if I've got you down for a second, can I put you down?
You can put me down for a second, I've been kind of quiet this meeting, taking it all in.
Thank you all very, very much.